This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
We'll call the meeting order of the Southampton Local School Committee, which is a regular monthly meeting, Wednesday, April 10th, 6:00 p.m. We have four out of five members present at the moment, with fifth one potentially coming in, but she's tied up on negotiations. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of March 13th. They were included in the packets. There's a motion to approve by Kim. Is there a second?
I can second since I'm here, but I... Can I second if I'm abstaining? Okay, second.
Seconded. Any discussion? None? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstaining?
Me, tell sure.
Motion passes. Two, zero, one. We'll wait to see if Dylan gets back with the March 20th and 27th minutes. Open time for the public? Okay. I don't... We don't have any warrants for tonight. No announcements or correspondence. Principals' report.
Okay. Here's the principals' report of April 10th. Our ELA MCAS testing is almost completed. We have a few makeups that we're doing this week, and we still have the week after vacation if we need to use it. Our math MCAS will begin on April 30th. Grade four students presented their trunk project on Thursday, March 28th. Many parents attended this great event for grade four. Students were very proud of their work. Storyteller John Cortino performed Monday, April 1st, for all grades, preschool through sixth grade. This was funded by the Southampton Cultural Council and the Norris PTO. It was fantastic to have him. I don't remember ever having him before, but I guess he had come to Norris years ago. The kids really responded well to him. It was very engaging. Many students participated in the viewing of the eclipse on Monday, April 8th. The Norris PTO funded the purchase of viewing glasses for students and staff. It was a great event. I left it up to teachers as to what they were comfortable with, and many took their kids outside. Or if they didn't take them outside, they did things on their... showed videos, the NASA streaming, and other things to sort of educate students about the eclipse, which was great. Quidditch was held yesterday, April 9th. It was a fantastic day for students and staff. The staff once again beat the students in the nighttime game.
Have the students ever won?
Not to my knowledge. Not since I've been there.
And how long did that clock run over time to allow the teachers to...
To catch up?
Catch up?
Yeah, the clock stopped for about three minutes. And an update on school choice. We offered six kindergarten spots so far, and we have a waiting list going. We are checking in with families who are on the census, who we think are supposed to be coming, who haven't registered yet, before we take some off of that waiting list. But the families that we did offer to so far are very, very happy. There's a couple pictures there from the eclipse on Monday, and our enrollment went up by one student. We have 486 stu... 480 students. So we lost one, gained two. So it was for... altogether, we gained one. So we're at 480. Any questions?
To the best of your knowledge, your incoming kindergarten children, are any of them on existing IUPs?
Yes.
Well, yeah, we have 20... I think we have 25.
I'm sorry. Let me rephrase that question. Are any of your incoming, potentially going to use that open out-of-district placement spot that's there?
Oh...
Do we have a budget issue?
Yeah, no, not that.
Okay.
We have 26 kiddos from preschool coming to kindergarten. Our own preschool coming to kindergarten. That's a lot.
Other questions? Nope? Okay. We'll pause there. We'll go back and take up the March 20th and March 27th minutes. If there's no objection, we can take them up as a packet.
So if we can look at March 20th.
Okay.
Two E. Second sentence here. Sorry, can you send one more packet down to the...
They're here. Sorry. That's what he was fighting with the copier with.
Yeah, it was...
Sorry, thank you.
The second line on that E... So I know the account number would be correct, but I know my handwriting on the next line was a little illegible. So I could read as Foundation Reserve Grant for a total of $51,550.
$5,150.
That makes a lot more sense now. I will fix that. And is it called, in fact, the Foundation Reserve Grant?
Yep.
Okay.
That's what I focused on.
So everything but the total is correct.
So amend the March 20th minutes to reflect the dollar amount to be $5,150.
And it was my recollection that Mary Jane Rickson was present at that meeting, and Dr. Bonneville, you were present at the public budget hearing.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Those are the things I could have remembered.
Did we move the minutes yet?
Not for this, sir.
Okay.
I moved to approve March 20th as amended and March 27th as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Tell sure.
Motion carries. Three, zero, one. Back to superintendent's report.
Sure. So we have some new faces in central office. Rachel Anderson is a payroll benefit specialist along with Jennifer Raymond, and Kim Musa is a new executive administrative assistant. And she just started working on the first. She does have an interesting background because she used to be a teacher and an assistant principal, and then was the data specialist. So her unique background is going to be very beneficial for us, especially as we transfer over to the Harper's database. We did meet with Pam Thornton. She's from a company that is a resource for HR businesses. And you pay an annual fee, and they answer any related HR-related question at any time with their attorneys. And they can also do on-the-job training and mentoring. And Rachel and Jen would like that to start sooner rather than later. So we are just trying to come up with a contract. I'm just waiting on their side, and then we'll get them trained and ready to go. They're also going to do an audit. I'm not sure how much that's going to cost, but we really need one. It's kind of an HR audit to find out if we're compliant with everything, and we're not, but just to see how extensive and what areas to focus on. That will be really helpful as well. So I did meet with Mass Munifin, Abby, the person who wants to be our assistant business administrator, and Kami Lamica. And Abby does want to be our assistant business administrator. We did interview, I don't know, five people maybe, for the business administrator last week, and we're going to have round two of interviews coming up the week after vacation. And although these people don't have school experience, business experience in the schools, a couple do have MBAs and have very vast backgrounds in various accounting and business background, which is wonderful. Uh... Um... Let's see. Oh, yeah. So actually, we found most of these people through ZipRecruiter. So that's just a good thing to know. UMass didn't really provide us with any viable candidates, neither did MASCE or Masbo. School spring, we did find... Had one candidate. So we will keep you posted, and as soon as round two interviews are done, I'm already doing reference checks. We hope to call a meeting of all five school committees so we can approve that business administrator and get that person on board sooner rather than later, at least to come in periodically while they give their notice. Pre-K audits just happened, and I think they're finalizing that, and Mary Jane will report on that in May. So as you know, the Worthington Agreement is expiring at the end of June, and they've already made other arrangements. And we're just trying to finalize details in regards to like SNAP and Power School to completely separate from them. But that seems to be going very smoothly as well. It's MCAS time, and we did have a few difficulties, but Suzer did a great job of ironing those out with Pearson. So thank you, Principals, for all the patience there. SOA plans were submitted, which need revisions every three years, and Mary Jane could tell you more about that next month. But it's just really how are they going to use state funding to increase student achievement in particular, in particular, science of reading. That's the focus and increasing literacy as well. And a couple years ago, we started the online handbook for the... It's for the elementary schools and the high school. There's all sorts of general laws and general policies and things like parental rights, non-parenting rights, who doesn't have physical custody, special ed, 504s. So we do have one online resource that will have all this information, and then there'll be a little link to each individual elementary school. That's specific. So we're almost at the stage where Principals will be looking at their own handbooks and just cutting out a lot of the stuff that can be found on the online handbook, so just so we're consistent across the board. But other than that, I think that those are the highlights. We've just been busy with central office, budget, payroll, grievances type of issues.
Questions?
I have questions.
Don't.
Other business administrator. I just have a couple questions on that. One, is Mass Munifin able, competent, and willing to take on someone who has no school business administrator experience to train them up on that issue, especially given the complex nature of our budgeting process? And two, has there been any conversation with Jay Sullivan at DESI about hiring a business administrator with not only no school experience, but no regional school experience as well?
Yeah, so Jay is aware of that, and it will be Kami Lamica will be doing the training, and she said she'd be more than happy to do on-the-ground training as long as the person is willing, and she will gladly share all of her expertise with them. But they knew it would be very difficult to find anybody with school experience, so finding somebody with regional experience wasn't going to happen. So, yeah, and Mickey has a call Friday with the state again, just to let them know where exactly Mass Munifin is right now. But Mass Munifin will... In order for them to stay on with us next year, we have to either do a procurement process for them, because it's such a large quantity of money, or if we have some accounting contractors in place, they can piggyback off of that. So Mickey's working with Mass Munifin and the state for that. But, yeah, they are aware. I know, I wish that wasn't the case, but that we had somebody who was a previous school business administrator, but no such luck.
Good. Questions?
Yeah, so DESI being aware and DESI being on board are two different things to me. So is DESI on board with this idea?
Well, it's not their place to be on board. It's our school committee's place to be on board.
Okay. But DESI's also been showing us an awful lot of grace lately, and so I don't want to necessarily do something that's going to get us into hot water with them. So I just wondered, like, have we asked... Has their opinion been asked for on this?
Yeah, we've discussed it because they know the difficulties we've had in securing a business administrator.
Yeah. So one of the other things that we had talked about, though, was if we couldn't find a qualified business administrator, the potential to contract that work out to a firm. Has that idea been put aside?
Yeah, so there are very few firms that do that, and the firm that's well-known to everybody, people have decided that would not best meet our needs to go that route. So instead of investing so much money into a contracted service to train somebody from scratch that we can have long-term here, made more sense. Right. And we couldn't... There's no retired business administrators or retired superintendents who are interested in taking... We advertise it as full-time, part-time, part-hybrid, just to get anybody through the door. So the people that are interested would be our full-time.
Okay. And then I know that I had sent you an email and asked about whether the district physician was going to stay, and I know you said that he was considering it. Do you know when you're going to have an answer on that?
No, I can... Rachel's been working with him, and I...
Excuse me, what's the question?
If the district physician is going to continue with us for next year.
Thank you.
I'm just concerned... No, concerned isn't the right word, but...
Understood.
It would be better to know sooner rather than later, so we don't repeat what we did last year with hiring someone like a day before school started. Okay. Thank you.
Yep, I will reach out right now. Good question.
Are you good?
I'm good.
Okay. So I know Mickey's not going to be here because he had to be in West Hampton. So I'll ask this question because it came up at the Select Board last night. The town of Southampton hasn't had an update yet as to where we stand with the grants and that as it relates to the Norris School and us closing our books and being able to get free cash certified. Do you have an update on when that's going to be reconciled? And if not, is there any way somebody could communicate in writing or email with our town administrator and give him an update that he can share publicly? Just so we have, you know, a target date that we're shooting for that somebody puts in writing?
Yep.
Thank you. Anything else on superintendent's report? Okay. Chair's report. As far as ADC Subcommittee related to the search for the new superintendent met, it seems like two weeks ago now, but maybe it was last week, met recently, and then made a recommendation to the ADC Committee that we temporarily suspend the search for superintendent until September, no later than September 16th to start, and that we move forward with naming an interim superintendent to start when... A start date to be negotiated, but to go no further than July, June 30th of '25. Everybody should be aware that there's a placeholder of April 25th for a meeting of all school committees, of which I know two of our committee members will be out of state and unable to attend, and we can take that up later under new business as an option. But we're going to need a quorum. And we are only waiting for whether or not there's one potential candidate, and we're waiting for them to confirm that they actually want the position. So we're waiting for a return phone call at some point. Other than that, I think everybody has a good update on what's going on in central office and the continuing ongoing work that's going to be for multiple years at this point. Any questions for me? Yes?
Is the candidate for the interim position or a permanent?
Interim.
Okay.
Hampshire Regional School Committee?
We're at the last meeting. Is there any kind of updated to...
Sure. So, let's see, we did a few things. I think the biggest thing that we talked about is with a lot of the challenges that we've had with the business office, we... DESI is a lot more aware of Hampshire Regional School District now. And one of the things that came up as a result of working closely with them is that the Hampshire Regional Agreement is approximately 30 years out of date. And so there's significant work that needs to be done on that. So Margaret Larson and Glenda Crustow have been working with DESI just to do like preliminary work to figure out what is it that we need to do and like how do we go about doing it. And so it's not just the regional agreement that needs to be worked on. The Union 66 Superintendency Union that we thought was dissolved actually hasn't been because DESI hasn't signed off on it. So that has to be addressed, and the all districts agreement also, like we have to get the all districts agreement and the regional agreement, like everything has to kind of line up. So there's some work that needs to be done there. And then also in talking... So those are like the must-dos.
What's the timeline? I mean, that's not an overnight thing.
Well, no, it isn't an overnight thing, but for everything to be in place for fiscal '26, this all has to be done by December 31st.
Of '25?
Yeah, of '24, to be in place, because fiscal '26 starts July of next year, right?
But don't those agreements all have to be voted on individually by the individual towns?
Yep.
So if they're not ready for this May?
Special town meeting in the fall? Maybe?
Maybe.
But that would just... So that's... You know, that is stuff that has to be done, because the last time the regional agreement was updated was like 1992, and then in 1993, like a whole bunch of major changes were introduced, and we've just never caught up to that. And then the other thing that DESI is recommending, Jay Sullivan has talked about this with Margaret and Glenda, is to work on the idea of full K to 12 district regionalization. So they are interested in recommending that we look into that. Look, I said it before, you did this one.
Yeah, no, I'm all for it. I would love a up or down vote to the citizens of Southampton to either regionalize or go on our own, one way or the other. Put it to the masses and let them vote.
Right. So that was a big thing we did. We talked about a couple of policies, but nothing huge. An hour and a half of the meeting of executive session, so...
Oh, what happened there?
Well, I tell you.
Redone.
But that's all I have. That's all I have on that.
Any questions? Nope? PTO update?
Oh, me again. Yeah, so PTO met Monday night, and it was their... I'm going to call it their recruitment party. They had a nice little spread of food, and they had a bunch of new people come to the meeting. So that was encouraging, that there might be people who would be willing to take up, if not board of directors jobs, maybe, you know, new volunteers to work on a lot of the events and the fundraising stuff. So that was really, that was really good. And, you know, once again, they funded a bunch of staff requests and some requests to offset the cost of busing for some field trips and that kind of stuff. So, yeah, it was a good meeting. That's my favorite... My favorite school committee job is going to that meeting. So come June, I'm still going to be asking to be the one to go there.
Any questions on PTO? Elisa, can you give us an update on the school council?
I can try. We met. I don't remember the date. I think it was the second. We are finishing up the school improvement plan. We are adding a technology goal, and then Margaret did a really nice job going over everything that we've talked about for the budget so far and what was proposed and what was voted on, and kind of outlining for the people on the council an understanding of how the budget normally works. I said this was kind of an off-year, but... And it was really good, and our next meeting, I believe, is May 28th. Is that a Tuesday? Yep, May 28th is our next and final meeting of the year.
Okay. Collaborative for educational?
So they met about three weeks ago and went over the tuition for like the updated summer program and tuitions for HEC Academy and Mount Tom Academy, fiscal report review for the year, and then the executive director, Todd Gazda's evaluation. So that was most of the meeting. And then I think next work is just getting his next contract circled back and tidied up and finished for him to continue on as executive director. So that was that meeting. They meet... They skip a month and they meet at the end of May. So I don't know who... I'm not moving forward on the meetings, so I think you guys have to figure out in June you figure out, okay, who will report to the collaborative.
Okay. Select Board update. Capital Committee did meet, and I believe we were able to move forward three out of the five requests from Norris, the one of them being the structural repairs to prevent the bell tower from collapsing, and the replacement of the... Or the complete overhaul of the gymnasium floor, strip it all the way down to the wood and build it back up, which I guess gets done like every 10 or 15 years.
It hasn't been done the whole time while I've been there, and I've been there 10, so...
Maybe every 11 years. And we were unable to fund the carpets. Margaret and I made a decision to remove the ask for laptops from the Capital Committee. We think that...
The ask of...
The ask. The ask for the laptops.
Got it.
From that, we... I think there's enough room in the budget for what we're going to do if we're sticking with what we put in for books. If we don't have a project there that's more than 50% of the funds, and we think we're proposing that the balance could come out of maybe what's in our revolving accounts for the laptops when we get there in September to take that back up. Okay?
There are five things, and that was four?
What was the other one?
I'm looking.
Oh, the parking lot. We passed on the... Because being the right-to-farm community, we thought a dirt parking lot would be absolutely fine. We don't need the blacktop, especially there's a water tax coming on blacktops with storm water. More to come on that one in the town meeting.
So the structural thing and the gym floor?
Correct. Yeah, and then we... We're going to come up with a creative plan for the laptops.
Okay. And that goes to the town meeting?
That'll be on the warrant articles. Yep, so that's passed there. It passed last night at the Select Board to move them forward.
Oh, okay. Great, thanks.
Those are good things.
Furnace, one of the things that...
The what?
The furnace. Was there a furnace issue? No, it wasn't furnace.
That wasn't on, no.
Okay.
What parking lot?
There was to seal the cracks and fill a couple holes. I don't know which parking lot. It was a generic ask.
Parking lot here. Fill in all cracks and apply, seal it over all pavement, repaint markings.
Yeah.
That's what that was for.
So would that be the front lot, the back lot, and the side lot?
Especially the front lot, yeah.
Can you please turn up the volume on the microphones? I thought you had the master control.
No. They have it at the studio. The other thing is the budget is moving along. There is a gap right now of $212,000 for the whole community. The three options on the table right now are to use operation stabilization money, which does not have unanimous support of the Select Board, to do an override, which doesn't have unanimous support of the Select Board, or to cut $212,000, which doesn't have unanimous support. So more to come on that. But there will be a meeting Tuesday night to try and figure out what that difference is. Good news is, is we got an update today from the state. There's some potential increased funding coming that might help shorten that gap with the $104 per pupil stays there. That'll be another $33,600 to the Norris budget. That won't have to come out of the taxpayer's side, though. Come on Chapter 70, so stay tuned on that. I think that's it for the Select Board. Other than, you know, the... I think the... We did a really good job with the budget on our side, Norris's side, and I think I would encourage all voting parents or concerned people with Norris to show up on May 7th to support the budget for both schools. At some point, we're going to have to vote on line item transfers for the '23 and '24 stuff. We don't have any of that yet. Skipping down to new business. Discussion authorizing the chair to act on behalf of the committee on the April 25th. So this is where I don't... I just thought I ran it... I did run it by Margaret. She wasn't opposed to it. I don't know what everybody thinks about it. First, Kim and Margaret are unable to make the April 25th meeting, so I would need a firm commitment for both of you to be there. If there's a question, then I'm wondering if we... If we somehow were some sort of vote to empower either myself as chair or the vice chair to act on behalf of the committee?
Have you run this by Kim really?
I can be there on... It says April 25th. That's...
Hampshire Regional. It's a public meeting, so probably 6:00 to 8:00.
I have to double-check to see if I worked till sick that night. Every other Thursday, I work till... I work late. I have to see.
Okay.
I should be able to. I can double-check when I get home, but I don't have anything in front of me that says I can't be there right now.
I'm not opposed to that happening, but I think we need council to tell us if we're allowed to do that.
Well, I'm more of the opinion we take the vote, we tell council what our vote was, and tells them we have to change it. I mean, if it looks like we're going to have quorum, then it's a moot point, and we're good. But we can also be the only committee that doesn't vote, and as long as the other four communities vote in favor of it, it doesn't matter what our vote is anyways, even as the largest stakeholder. But we... but we will have no say.
Just asked a very leading rhetorical question. Am I correct in assuming there is one candidate for the interim superintendent position? And if we were not to approve that candidate, we would not have a superintendent necessarily in place for July 1 of this coming year?
That is correct. And the only other piece of information that, that is publicly known is that this person has the unanimous support of the MASC or the M S A C?
MASC.
MASC. That's all we know about this person.
It has, I believe, that all districts meeting was in a pompous session.
It was.
So then we know that that superintendent has substantial regional experience as well.
That's what we've been told.
What do you define substantial as?
Has, I will strike that word, has regional school district experience as a superintendent.
Yes. I believe they have multiple years as superintendent, but it was the last three years of their career as a regional superintendent. I think they have 10 years together as a super, only three of which was at the regional level.
So what is the, so we couldn't do the?
No, it's the search committee.
MASC, MASC, we have, we have hired them as our consultants for this. And so they were working on this in tandem with, when we tried for the permanent, both so that if one didn't work out, we could pivot to the other. And that's what we've ended up doing.
Right. And then I would just say again, because the, the thought here, because this is a unique circumstance where normally you would have three or more candidates and the screening committee would act in executive session. But the screening committee needs to report out a minimum of two people. Otherwise, it's a selection committee if they only name one person. They've done the work in secrecy. So if we don't have three candidates, we only had one for this interim that identified. So we can't do it that way, the way we would traditionally vet them to make sure everything's good, to then come out in public with some more confidence and of that nature. And to find a full-time superintendent, this is, this is just, they're indicating this is the wrong time of year to be looking. Current superintendents are more concerned about shutting down their schools, finishing the year and all that, and then take a month off and then they'll start the search process in August.
And they also don't want to leave their own districts and lurch by suddenly leaving now and then having, you know, if we were finding someone with experience, then them having to scramble.
So I'm just going to, I'm going to make a motion to authorize the chair of the Norris School Committee to vote on behalf of the entire school committee for the purposes of appointing an interim superintendent at the August, excuse me, the April 25th All Districts meeting, should a quorum of the Southampton School Committee not be present?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Some moved.
Kimberly says you can't do that, then.
Yeah, we won't do it.
I think that was clever.
Okay. All right. So is there other new business? Is there anything else any other member wants to discuss that can't wait till our next regular meeting?
Well, I'd like this to be something we talk about at our next regular meeting. So I think I need to bring it up now. So we need to update our medication policy and something that we talked about a few months ago and I haven't heard anything since. So I would like to have a draft updated medication policy at our next, our regular monthly meeting in May so that we can vote on it in June and have it ready to go for the start of the next school year. So Deanna, I'm asking that you have that ready for us for our next regular monthly meeting.
Discussion? Okay.
That reminded me of something else.
Is there anything else that anybody wants to bring up under other that can't wait till our next regular meeting?
Well, sort of. It has to do with the health, the health, the, the food one, the policy that you brought to us.
Wellness policy.
The wellness policy. Where are we at with that?
So this is where we're at. It's very lengthy. All the principals and central office have gone through it with a fine tooth comb and there's a lot of changes. Technically, now it needs to go back to the nurses and the wellness committee, which they haven't, they're supposed to be meeting, which they haven't, to discuss those changes to see how they feel about that. That has not happened yet because I haven't even thought about wellness policies since this whole central office thing. So that's going to, and I don't see that being resolved by, even if the nurses looked at it like tomorrow, it, it, there's going to, there will be a need for further discussion.
I guess my just only concern with that, if this is, if it can be dispelled, great. With part of the houseways and means budget, that there was inclusion for continued funding for free school, universal free school lunches.
Yep.
Because our wellness policy is not in compliance with existing standards, does that not having a updated policy, does that put us in jeopardy of losing either state or federal funding for lunches for the next school year?
No, not at all. And you haven't had a wellness policy that's been in place ever in 20 years. So there's no humongo rush for that. No, the, it's all, all schools regardless of wellness policy question. Yep.
All right. So we'll add those two as ongoing, but just so we don't lose track of them.
Right. So medication policy for the first read next month and vote in June.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
So what's the name of the new policy?
The wellness policy.
It's a wellness policy.
Yes.
Ongoing business. Reconsider the fiscal year 25 academic calendar, which was accepted by this body on February 15, 2024. We can, I, so on behalf of the committee, on March 27th, I sent an email to Steven Schmuck, S C H M U C K. He's the Vice President of Operations for the New England, Louisiana and Florida regions for Durham Busing. And you don't have to type my entire email that I'm about to read into the record. Just reference that dated email. Steven, Rachel Emerson forwarded your email to me. Can I ask that the Durham School Services please provide us with a copy of the fully executed contract? We are unable to locate it. With, with all the turnover within the central office, we aren't even confident that we are budgeting the proper amount that would, would like to avoid any shortfalls in our budget. Second, just to be clear, it is my understanding that Southampton Norris pre K through six shares all 11 of its buses with Hampshire Regionals, grades seven through 12, and that for each day of service, both parties pay 50% of the daily rate. We are based on 180 school days and are charged for additional days should we use them. Further, we are permitted to have a difference of up to 10 days from, from each other without additional charges being incurred. Thus, elementary schools could start on August 28th to allow the younger kids to adjust to school and then hit the ground running on education on September 3rd, while the higher grades may not need this transition time. Should Southampton have school on a day that Hampshire Regional does not, then we are charged 50% of the daily rate. And on the backend, when Hampshire Regional has a school day that Southampton does not, they are charged 50% of the daily rate and we are not. Both groups pay 50% for 180 days during the school year. If this is incorrect, please let me know. And once you share the contract, if you could point to the specific language in there that supports your view, I would appreciate it. Steven wrote back the following day. Thank you very much for reaching out for further clarity and review. I am sorry to hear about the turnover. We have had over a decade of great partnership with the HRSD. And however we can support the transitions, we are here. I pulled the executed, executed agreement, which encompasses the bid specifications also attached on page 17, item K, copied below, is, does define how we address split calendar days. After reviewing this section, I would change my original response to be we would bill 50% of the bus rate for the day that only one of the tiers ran. This applies up 10 day, up to 10 days during the school year. If the alternating days exceeded 10 days, we would then bill 100% of the charge. I hope this is the answer and documents you were looking for. Sounds like you will be able to alter those starting days within the cost parameters you were hoping for. So the committee had asked to get something in writing from them. I submit that that is at least a written response.
Mm-hmm.
That satisfies it. So with that being said, I did ask Elisa to update the, for a draft, update the proposed start time for Norris to be, teachers report on the 28th, which is a Wednesday. Students report on the 29th and the 30th, then have that Monday off as the holiday. And then we continue on. And then in June, back the end of school up from the 17th to the 13th, which would be a Friday.
I thought we were talking about students starting on the 28th, no?
Yeah, it was supposed to be a three day, then a four day, then a five day.
I'm open to whatever. That is not the instructions I gave Elisa because I wasn't going off my notes.
Yeah, I thought, I thought it was historic or normally we've done the first week of school, a three day week for the kids. The second week of school is a four day week for the kids and then.
I just did what John asked me to do. I wasn't thinking about what the discussion was, but I do understand what you're saying. Yeah.
And I think that was also the recommend, that was the preferred calendar from the association, if I was not, if I remember.
So if we back it up, I mean.
So our teachers would start that Tuesday then?
Right. But it does mean that if we utilize, right now, if we only back up two days, again, this is strictly what I, what I asked Elisa to do. We end on the 13th, which is a Friday. However, if we utilize our five days, then we are going out to the following Monday because there's a holiday in that next week. So if we were to back up, no matter what, we'd be done on the 20th, which means if we use all our five days, we'd have a holiday on Thursday and then we back in on that Friday for a half day. But it is what it is because we have to have 180 days.
Nobody would be there. The last day of school.
Well, and I just noticed that although the color coding is correct in June, which is the purplish colors on the 13th, and the holiday is indicated on the 19th, on that box where it says event or holiday.
Mm-hmm.
I didn't change last day of school for staff. It says the eighth, that would need to be updated. I updated the top part. I didn't update the bottom part.
Yeah.
Sorry. I can go back and do that.
Yeah. Well, this is just a draft, but I mean, I would, if we're, we've already approved one. So if we're going to make a change, can, can we talk about it tonight and see if we can come to an agreement so that we can vote on a amended version?
Yeah, I think parents are going to want to go sooner than later.
They are.
For travel.
I mean, PTO asks me when I'm there. And so, so I've been thinking about this. There's a couple of things. If we diverge from the rest of the district, right, and we do our own thing, does this move us further away from like the mindset of maybe regionalization? Like, is this going to set a precedent that we go off on our own on some things and?
Well, I, I say no, but here's why I say that is because I think, I think the elementary schools across the district should be on this schedule. And here's, here's why. Because the younger kids need more time to transition. Oh, we're back in school. We got to settle down. We got to fall. So those first two or three days, they're not a waste. It's like, let's get reprogrammed that we're in school, we're back in school, where the older kids don't need that. And on the reverse end, up at the regional, like last year, my daughter was in seventh grade and she, the last two weeks of the year, she only had to go three days because it was finals and she didn't have testing.
Yeah.
She wasn't there anyways. She was already home by herself. So it would, you know, the argument of the, I can't have my older kids at school while my younger kids are home, doesn't really.
No, I meant, I meant more just for being a cohesive unit. Because and the other aspect of that too, as I was thinking about, like I've worked in districts where, you know, at the beginning of the school year, there's a convocation. And if, if you're start, if you're having different start dates, you're not going to have that. And we don't know what someone coming in, you know, in the superintendency, do they want to do that? Is it important? Do they have a great program that they want to run? And so if we, if we are different than that and we, if this is going to set a precedent that every year we would do this, then that would preclude that. And I just, I just wonder if that's an unintended consequence.
Two points on that. Just because I think it's a great, great question, great point. But I thought about the same thing. I, oh, yeah, I started with the same thing. First one, I, I've heard from other schools that they wanted to push their start back dates back as well and that they were told they couldn't. So I think realistically, this may set off a wave of changes of calendars to be in alignment with that. And two, if we get to the point of regionalization, the contracts are so vastly different currently that this whole discussion is going to have to be rehad no matter what, because we can't do a convocation for the entire district currently, because Norris's contract says it can only come back one day before school starts and it has to be in the building. And then Hampshire Regional can't start before August 28th anyway. So it's kind, we already have this issue of each contract is different. So I think if we hit the regionalization, we're going to have to worry about, this is going to be the, this is not going to be the big.
It's more just the mindset of are we one cohesive district or are we all?
No, we're not.
Okay. Fair enough. I just.
Today, we're not.
All right. Just thought I'd put that out there as a consideration.
I'm a little worried of families that have kids in both elementary school and at Hampshire Regional having like very different schedules for start and end for school day. I don't know if historically they've been together where you have now like, you know, a, a week separating the start days for, you know, say you have like a seventh grader and a fourth grader, like very different start and end dates. It's just being extremely inconvenient for families. But I don't know how that would go down.
Yeah. So I mean, I guess, I, I kind of go along with Dylan because I'm pretty sure it was the West Hampton Elementary School that they, they wanted to start or, they want to start on this where teachers come in on 28th, start on 29th, which is in alignment with the Hampshire Regional contract as a state. But for, I wasn't, I wasn't there, I don't know, historically, because the, the school calendar for the seven, six years now, going on my seventh year on this school committee, this is always a bono contention when it gets to the school committee level, because it's the school committee's responsibility to set the calendar and vote on it. But the way this district does it, which isn't necessarily a bad idea, but the principals get together and create a unified front and submit that one forward. And then it usually flows through, but it started with us with the number of half days. And then it's like, okay, but then this year, the way the calendar falls and it's like, well, we're not even going to start till September. And the response that we initially got was that's how Hampshire Regional, I believe, staff wanted it when they did, when they surveyed the unions, you know, starting back on the 27th with kids on the 28th, staying the 29th and the 30th, not making 30th a half day or a holiday for a long weekend, is what the Southampton Teachers Association recommended. So I also take the other approach that while I don't want to placate to the union, when I can be in agreement with them and not cause an issue, I kind of want to support them. And you know, they are either the first or they're the second biggest union in the district.
Right. Do we know why the Hampshire Regional, can you explain, I'm missing, why the Hampshire Regional calendar is deciding to start after the?
They can't, they can't by contract start before the 28th. And there's two professional development, there's two days they have at the beginning of the year. So Hampshire Regional, the earliest they could start would be the Wednesday. Wednesday, Thursday would be teacher day. Students would return on Friday. And they said, well, we're not going to start school the Friday before a long weekend with students.
Yeah, yep.
So the other question I have about this, where we're.
Why can't they just fix that contract? Sorry.
Wow. Anyway, is, is this, this idea that we can have different days of buses running or not running, is this going to, are we limiting this to the start and end dates of the school year? Or is this going to fall into, it's only raining in Southampton, even though there's a blizzard up in Chesterfield. So Norris will have school, but Hampshire won't.
The only time that we, we have contemplated invoking that clause was at the initial stages of COVID, when we had the two, I think we had the two week shutdown and then Norris was able to open back up because we did the HEPA filters and all that stuff. My dates might be off a little bit here, but that was going on. And then the school committee, because the Norris Committee was fighting to do everything we could to keep the schools open until the governor mandated the shutdown. And we contemplated canceling either the February or the, it must have been the April vacation. vacation. And that's when this clause came up, like Bobby Jones at the time saying, you, from a bussing standpoint, there's no costs. You can cancel your vacation and have school that week without Hampshire Regional having, because they believe Hampshire Regional had already gone remote, which again, older children have different abilities.
So I'm saying though, for us though, are we, are we, if we change this calendar, are we saying this is just for the start date and the, the end date? We're not, this isn't, this isn't now saying to the superintendent, you have five different decisions to make on snow day and you've gotta.
No, I would, I don't think that would, that would cause chaos.
I know, that's why I'm asking. Because I don't wanna cause chaos.
You can't put that in the calendar, right? I mean, we could say in the event of such and such, we reserve the right to cancel April vacation in the beginning. And I'm not proposing we do that, but that would be there, but you don't know when the snowstorm's gonna hit.
Right. Okay.
So the other, to piggyback off that, two questions. One, are there any existing professional development days on the calendars that don't line up or half-days that, that don't line up such that we are already within our 10 deviations?
No, because our half-days, Hampshire Regional has school. It's just a matter of what time they do that second run.
Are there any closed profession, are there any days that Norris is not open to students and Hampshire Regional is or vice versa, because of non-aligned professional development on the calendar? Okay. And then the second one is, do you know if the interpretation of that, what's your interpretation , John? Up to 10 days, if we were to move this back three days to the start, let's say students' return on the 28th, which I understand is not what you asked Elisa to do, but we asked students to return on the 28th, which would be three days in August, and then it would be three days at the end of the year, is that three days of scheduled deviation or is that six days of scheduled deviation?
Only three for us.
And three for him, so each?
Each dis.
School is 10?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. It's not 10?
Are you sure?
I don't know about that.
We can only have 100, call it 10, call it 5, I'm only asking for three days. So if the, if the willness of the body is not to change anything, then let's just jump to that and then.
No, I think we're just trying to be careful.
Would it be six days? Because now you've got three on each side that would be.
Which is still not 10.
I would go with the five on five, but again, you're the, you're the attorney, I'm only the bean counter. I sent you the contract.
You're really good at counting, what can I say?
Just, yeah, no, you know, I didn't, will the body. This is an agenda item, so if a parent or future school committee member wants to weigh in.
I think you should just vote and this is just a roundabout insane discussion going on.
State your name for the record.
Jennifer Johnson. If it's three, if it's six, it's still under 10. It's just like this whole mindset is bonkers to me. Absolutely bonkers, like it's a calendar. Go with what our teacher association wants, which is what has been in the previous years, the three, four, five, whatever, or even two, four, five. But to put this much thought into a calendar when all of the other things in this district are so screwed up, this is mind-boggling to me, like.
Well, just to address that though, I think the point to think about here is, is in the, especially the professional development issue, if there's days where different schools are not running, even those 180 days.
But this calendar was made by all those people, so other than those first three days, all of the other days should line up.
Not always. They've not always, not always have Hampshire Regional's professional development lined up with North Norris's, which have not lined up. There's been times where there's been deviations between the five schools.
Okay.
And if you, if we take six of them and there ends up being five more deviations, there's going to be a financial impact.
I agree with you on that. I'm not.
That's why we asked for the question, just, just so you're aware.
No, and I understand that and I understand that question to that point, but I guess this is just a poor assumption on my point, that if this calendar that was already approved and no one has ever even thought about deviating from these things because it was a question you had to get from the bus company, I would assume those five or 10 days are not built into that calendar already because nobody even knew they could use them prior to this. So that would be where I would go with that point. That they didn't set it up within their head already. Okay, we have 10 days that we can deviate for professional development or anything else that we've already built into the calendar, when you had to literally go ask the company for a contract that is apparently not in central office where it's supposed to be, to make sure that this was not an issue. So I could be overspeaking for the principals that made the calendar, but I would assume they didn't even know about this, that they didn't build it in to the calendar already. But I could be wrong.
I think there is, like if the idea that we wanna someday, like I'm all for the three, four, five, like that's what I think makes sense and would be great for the kids and I, in support of doing what this, the teachers association, teachers association wants, but I also wanna be thoughtful about if we wanna someday be regionalized, like staying as a region, being thoughtful about how this affects families on either end, making plans, how this affects if you have Hampshire Regional older siblings watching younger elementary school kids and at the end of the school year in June, like just thinking about all the different implications of changing a schedule. I think it's important to be thorough and thoughtful.
That's true, but that's also not the point of your school committee. Your school committee is for the Norris school. It's not to look out for everyone's babysitting jobs and taking care of their kids and everything else. That's not, that's not the job.
I think it's being thoughtful about the families, which we.
I've talked to lots of families that have kids at both schools and one of their sticking points was by the time that count, you get to that point, kids that have sports in the older grades in the, in the high school and stuff have already been practicing for weeks. No one is still on vacation then. And I personally don't think real, regionalization is the best plan. We have all of the kids. We pay the biggest amount of money. What is the draw for us to be regionalized?
Okay.
So.
So I'm gonna move.
Just, go ahead, tell me your thoughts. Just express your thoughts without making the motion.
I, I think we go back to what the conversation's been since the beginning, which is parents, teachers return on August 27th.
Yep.
Students return on August 28th.
Yep.
That the tentative last day of school for students would be June 12th and last day for teachers would be June 13th.
Is it, is it one day after they say, Elisa?
One day after, yeah.
One day after.
So the mistake on here is, it said the 18th and it should've been the 16th.
I've been here now updating it all.
Okay.
Okay. And then, then June 19th, and then in the event that we have to go out to five days, it would push us out to June 20th with teachers on the 23rd.
Yeah. Good luck. If we want five days.
Correct. So the motion is that for calendar year 24, 25, that teachers' first day is Tuesday, August 27th.
Yep.
Students excluding kindergarten kids.
Excluding preschool.
Would be, preschool would be August 28th. And then that would make the last day of school, Thursday, June 12th for students and June 13th for staff, provided no use of snow days.
And for preschool to start on?
I don't know what that date is.
You know, and I did wanna question that. So here it says September 9th is the first day for preschool, when we were starting possibly on the 29th. But normally, if we're starting, if the students are starting on the 28th, preschool should start on the 4th, September 4th. So can we do that?
Yeah.
Preschool, September 4th.
We'll add to the motion that preschool first day is Wednesday, September 4th. The motion made by Dylan, is there a second?
Second.
You need to update it in real time. Seconded, discussion. All in favor?
Hush, right.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, motion carries 400. Is there anything else or ongoing business that we need to discuss? Hearing none. Somebody wanna make the motion to adjourn?
Adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Kim, seconded by Dylan. No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Meeting ends at one minute past 7:00.